How about do a garage door?
Broken.
It got replaced.
It got replaced. I wanted windows to go in. The building doors. We gotta see it's broken.
Hi.
Well, the COVID cases are going up all over the country, yeah? This is, this is, this is a serious second wave here.
It's out of state though.
Huh?
Out of state.
It's out of state, but we're still seeing creases in rain.
Yeah, I know. Well, we just try to keep waiting as much as possible.
Good, that's perfect. Leave that right alone, I'd be just happy. Jason, alright. When are you gonna get that fat filter I asked you for?
They don't make them in your size.
My mother asked me, she goes, she goes, you don't get along with him or what after we were talking? I'm like, no, no, it's sarcasm, it's just sarcasm. She didn't get it. No, he just always insults me. I'm good with it.
Being 2020. Tomorrow's Friday the 13th. Who knows, it started in March, this is our first one. Mommy, this will be it, I think not. What a year. Friday the 13th. The last time we had it, Friday the 13th, that was a COVID, 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 COVID. Buying toilet paper, there's one tomorrow. I'm stocking up.
I use the three seashells.
Oh gosh. Carol forwarded me the stuff from the library. It's very good. I need to get ahold of the library board and course.
I have another appointment at seven o'clock.
No, I didn't want to bother, this was before elections.
We're gonna push this on.
Let's do it. We get a lot. Does anybody know if Dan is coming?
Yeah, he's in the bathroom.
No, no. Albert just said that he's in the bathroom. He's in the bathroom?
Yes, he is.
So we can give him a minute. Just the van we're waiting for. Alright, if I could call this, this meeting to order. It's now 5:30. We have a full board presence. We do have a quorum. If I could look at Article 1 of Fledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the people who live and their citizens for us.
Article 2, public participation. Do we have anybody this evening that wants to speak on behalf of public participation? Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a few things. Pertaining to the Board of Selectmen going into executive sessions. I was made aware that we are not going into executive session properly according to the letter of the law. I did seek out legal counsel on this. The attorney agreed with the individual that brought it to my attention. It's just a technicality. We're not to just read the statute number. But there are certain criteria that allow you to go into executive session by law. We're to make it public. Exactly what we're gonna be discussing, well, the nature. Not the details of it, but whether it's personnel issues, whether it's monetary issues, whether it's wages, whether it's discipline. But there are criteria, so I'd just like to bring that to the attention of the board. Secondly, I, I got a, I got a letter from constituent that asked me to bring, bring this to the board. So please don't shoot the messenger. This has to do, and again, this will have to be discussed in executive session at a later date, not tonight. The individual wants to know, it pertains to the contract of the town manager. He wants, this is what he's asking for, wants the date that the contract was signed. He wants to know, secondly, how many selectmen signed the contract? He's asking for the names of those selectmen that signed the contract. He's asking if there was any deliberation when this contract was signed. He's asking if this was run by the town attorney before it was signed. He'd like to have verification on the validity and the legality of the contract.
You know, Dan, before you go too far with this, I mean, all of that information is public. I don't know why we need to discuss that in, in, in our meeting here this evening. You have that information, you can get that information, it's available.
Well.
Right?
Just a public, public information request.
I don't, I don't know why we need to take it up in, in, in the form of our, our meeting. I mean, that information is available to you or to this constituent.
Well, if we have a constituent that's asking for this information, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Chairman, how you would like me to address this.
I would say bring it up to me directly and I'll take it to the town manager and we'll get that information for him. Or if you wanna go directly to Gary and get that information. I think either one of us can supply it for you.
Well, okay, so if I bring you, if I bring you the information that this gentleman is requesting, can you get that information back to me so that I can get back to this gentleman?
I believe that that's all public record. Am I correct, Gary?
I believe if a person wants information, they need to disclose who they are in their request. So let, let the person make the request in person so we can see who it is. And that person will get that information in the town manager. It doesn't have, it doesn't have to be spectacle is what is being made here right now.
Louder if you can, please.
It doesn't have to be a spectacle of what is being made here right now.
Listen, it was brought to my, he asked me to get this information for him, so please don't shoot the messenger.
Okay, so we've, we're all set with this now? Yeah? Anybody else? Paul, go ahead.
And just hopefully, I've been going around town and I see that the tires, you know, we've discussed it already, that the tires get alternated now. And I think by next spring would be a good idea, hopefully, once you have all that money in that account, on the car, everything, whatever you have left there. So I decided to bring it up tonight, so far.
And, and I couldn't hear you, Paul, but I'm not sure.
With that mask on, okay. By next spring, if, I notice when I'm going through town that the tires alternated everywhere. And I'm hoping, once you get enough money in that certain account, by next spring, I think it'd be a good idea, whatever you can tire, I would tire starting off first.
Are you referring to a particular road here?
Any, any road in town at all? Whatever the worst one, I'd go with the worst one first.
Well, there's a whole list there that we are going to attempt to do next year. I mean, I don't know if you've seen that list, but yeah.
I've seen the list, but I'm telling you the worst one, be the Kmart parking lot, be the worst one, I'd go there.
Well, certainly we are aware of that.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's a good start for now.
Yes, Mr. Talbot.
Posting signs illegally is against the state law. It's against the, it's against the law, it's the state law not to do that. And it's obvious that everybody in Manawaska, that signs have been posted at night for past on and off, for the past two and a half years. When are you gonna direct the police to take these illegal signs out of there?
I'm not sure if I understand what signs we're referring to, but I, Mr. Ross Dubois is here, so.
You know, you know what signs I refer to, there's signs in the, the lake area.
That refer to what?
Wait a minute, wait, you're telling me there's no signs there?
Signs that are posted for speed limits?
For what?
For speed limits? Is that what you're referring?
No, ATV signs.
This should be directed to the ATV.
Who gave the authority to put those signs up?
Mr. Talbot, this should be directed to the ATV club.
What's that?
It should be directed to the ATV club.
No, no, it shouldn't. This has to do with the state law, it's being broken. And you have the responsibility to do something about it.
There's a state law there that I, that we are.
It's a state law. You want me to bring the thing on paper?
Ross, is there any, can you comment on this in any way? Do you know of any, any information here that pertains to this state law?
As far as I know, the ATV club did go through the state for the putting signs up.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
I said, as far as I'm aware of, the ATV club has checked with the state about putting signs up.
They have the authority to put signs on public roads?
If the state makes it an access route, yes.
I'm not talking about the access, I'm talking about the signs all over all the roads, the length of the roads. An access signs is about 220 yards, it's not five or six miles.
Alright, alright, Mr. Talbot, we'll just, I mean, we're not going.
I wanna hear what you're gonna do about this.
This is not something that we're gonna be able to finalize this evening and it's, it's something you need to discuss.
This has been going on for a long time now. Never mind not this evening, I wanna hear something now.
The end of discussion, thank you. Go ahead.
You know, two can play hardball, you know?
Albert, go ahead.
I just wanna say that the people that put up all the decorations at the park, all volunteered, they did a beautiful job, it looks very good. And I think somebody should tell them they did a great job, it looks really good.
Well, I think at this point I can make a comment that, that they do look good and I wanna thank all of those volunteers that, that did help. You know, anytime that you can get volunteers to help today, it's a, it's a tremendous asset and certainly we appreciate all of their time. So thank you on behalf of myself and this board, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I have, I have another question.
We're going on to Article 3, Mr. Talbot.
What's that?
We're going on to Article 3.
You, you, you don't wanna answer my question?
To consider the 2020-2021 tax commitment.
I don't know what I'm coming here for. But I'll tell you, I will get back to you.
Mr. Talbot, you're out of order.
What do you mean I'm out of order? I'm going home.
So part of this, part of 3, this discussion, you have some items in front of you in your packet. First one is the tax rate calculator. The next one are mill rate scenarios that are, that are put on, just kind of projected on one major. We have a correspondence from our auditor in respect to what our fund balance, our undesignated fund balance should be. And we have our fund, a copy of our fund balance policy that was adopted back in 2012. For what we should, this sort of dictates what our optimum fund balance is and what sort of actions need to be taken if, if it's below or above or it's at target. So the auditor's opinion here is that we should, with the budget of our size, which includes the school, we should have between 30 to 90 days of operating cash. The middle of the road for that is about $2 million. So currently, Carol can chime in here, we're still awaiting our final audit, but I think, Carol correctly from our, we, we believe our fund balance, our undesignated fund balance to be about $100,000 today. So we are obviously below our fund balance, undesignated fund balance. Now, we've had this discussion in our budget process, how, how does a fund, the undesignated fund accumulate money? And, and it happens a few different ways. You, you have your tax commitment here and you have your overlay, which is that bottom figure in the bottom right hand corner. The overlay is a, is a cushion in the tax commitment that is there for errors in the tax commitment or going fund for some things. If you have a budget that was underspent and brought in more revenue than was budgeted and has overlay, all of those three things combined will, will contribute to the undesignated fund or not. So the three ways to grow the undesignated fund is to collect more revenue than you, than you.
Projected.
Than you project. You spend less than you budgeted and your overlay, if it's not used up, will go to the undesignated fund. So really the only way to fund the undesignated fund. So why am I explaining that here? It's because you're, tonight you're going to make a decision about the mill rate, what the mill rate is going to be. And knowing where we are in our fund balance, right now our undesignated fund balance, our policy tells us that we need to take some sort of action. So, you know, tonight would be the first step, I guess, in taking an action on the undesignated fund balance. With that said, this year, which is page 2 of the municipal tax rate calculator form, is basically where all of the town's business comes down to here. You know, everything is reduced to here and what you'll find is our, our real estate, the value of our real estate, personal property, all of the homestead exemption, the value of that, the bedding property, bedding exempt properties. You have the assessments in there, line 7 through 11 are the assessments, county tax, our municipal appropriation, fifth district, local education, which, which is basically the total operating, the total expense side of the budget. And then you have your allowable deductions, which is a revenue sharing figure, and all other revenues, which would be the excise tax collections and fees that we collect. So we use the revenues to reduce the amount of money we need to collect in taxes. So that is basically this worksheet right here, it's a live worksheet on Excel that, that made revenue services provides to us. Every town in the state of Maine utilizes the same form, it's, it's, it's something that we do. That's defined to us how to do. So we, we get to a point in that, in here where this form gives us a range for a minimum and a maximum rate where we can set the mill rate. With the expenses and the revenues that we have put in here, we could have a minimum tax rate of 22.3 or $22.30 or a maximum tax rate of 23.41 or $23.41. So I will direct you to this page right here. As I'm going, if you have any questions, you know, you can go ahead and ask. You see within there the possible mill rate scenarios and what that looks like for the overlay. Our current mill rate is 23.2, $23.20 per $1,000 of value. So if we were to stay at 23.2 right now, flat on the mill rate, that would result in an increase, an overlay of $339,635. If we went to the, to the other end of the spectrum, with the lowest possible mill rate allowable by this form, with the lowest mill rate we could have is 22.3 or $22.30. That would be nine tenths of a mil decrease or 90 cents. Would only leave us with an overlay of $1,761.32. So, you know, talking with our auditors, indicated to us that we need to work on fund balance, our undesignated fund balance. Cheryl and I spent quite a bit of time discussing this. We worked with you all on a budget to try to deliver a budget that achieves, that tries to meet the need, but also achieves some reduction in the mill rate, some tax relief. So right now, what we're recommending is a range, is something between the range of 23 to 22.9. The 23 would leave us an overlay of 264,552, that's 264,552. And the, to 22.9, which would be three tenths of a mil decrease for an overlay of 22.7 and $10. Tax rate calculator that you have in front of you goes one further decimal point to 22.95. That can see an overlay, you can see right here in the bottom. Bottom right hand corner, the bottom cell, 245,781.28. Questions?
So what is our current fund balance?
Undesignated fund is about $100,000.
So what's the projected amount of overflow from the other departments that are gonna be dumping into there?
Well, we're not gonna know until we conclude our bid this year, right?
Right, but we, you must have some sort of idea maybe from seeing the budget over the year?
Well, I think that. We're almost six months into our budget. But we've reduced our budgets too. So when we did that, we had this discussion that as we reduce our budgets, we, we take away from our opportunity to roll money into the surplus. So I don't, I don't know, you know, where we're gonna end up right now. Depends what kind of winter we're gonna have, what kind of costs we're gonna see with, with public works. There's a lot of unknowns between now and June 30 that I wouldn't be able to project other than to say, I expect us to be on budget. To say that we're gonna have extra money or money left unspent. By reducing the budget in our departments the way that we have, I, I think that we've, you know, not necessarily shot ourselves in the foot, but we've made it harder for us to roll money into the surplus from, from the expense side. Okay, now the revenue side, that too, it's a projection. Feel comfortable that we're gonna collect the revenues that we budgeted. But until we get through it, it's too early, it's too early to tell right now.
I mean, I know we've all worked hard to try to cut budgets and reduce amounts and I know one of the things that I signed up for was to try to reduce the tax rate to the, to the, the public, so. I would like to see if we can try to entertain the 22.9 to at least give some sort of reduction to the, to the tax burden.
If I might add too, it will, it'll be helpful for you, it's that this year's homestead exemption went up, in the state of Maine, it went up to $25,000. And that $25,000 statutory amount is affected by the town certified ratio, so our certified ratio at 117% brings the value of the homestead exemption to 29,250. So there's gonna be some relief there on the homestead exemption side as well. And then the veterans exemptions are going up, they're affected by the certified ratio by, I think we're about $6,300 last year for the veterans exemptions and I think we're gonna be 7,020, something like that. So there's gonna be a little, a little more there too, for those who qualify for those exemptions.
Yeah, there's also a lot of business owners and other people who don't qualify for homes because they have multiple homes.
Right.
We wanna try to help everybody out, but that doesn't make sense.
I want it to be at 22.7, I would compromise between that and the 20, because 22.9, Jason's actually the 22.95, which is, you know.
Well, we can do 22.9.
I mean, 22.8, 22.85, like I, I won't ask you guys for the whole thing that I wanted to do, but.
No, but I think 22.8 is, somewhere's in the middle and.
22.8 would give us what?
189.469.
Well, actually a bit more than that because there's an extra decimal, so 22.85, I mean.
I'll tell you in a second.
With, 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 with what, $100,000 in that account at the present, so and we're, we're shooting for a, a figure that should be close to 2 mil?
22.85 would give you about $208,000 overlay. Last year's overlay was about 1.50, I'm rounding. 22.85, four and a half tenths of a mil. Yeah, three and a half cents.
Any other, any other thoughts here? Everybody, I know you're all.
I was gonna with Jason with the 2.9, but you gave me 2.
What do you think about the 2.85?
Well, that's fine, as long as it goes down some, even if it's not much, it's a little bit.
Yeah.
Alright, you all set with that? That's, because that's the recommendation I'm gonna put in.
You're looking at about $20,000 difference from that half.
From that figure that you're seeing now.
Isn't that, I, if that's me, I'd be super aggressive and we'd be all the way down at the bottom of the list. I, I get it, I get that it gives us no savings account if there's a big emergency, we have nothing to help us, you know, um. It's the same board for the next budget, as long as we get aggressive, like with whatever you guys want to do and, um.
I'm just afraid if we cut too much and go too low, that next year when we're sitting at the table, and it won't be that far from, from today, we're then going to have to say we got to go up higher now because we went down too far.
Yeah, I get it.
I'd rather go a little bit this year, and then if we can do a little more next year, great, if not, then we stick to there.
Dan was going to give his, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm all set. You know, I mean, looking at this, I mean, this is like a, uh, looking at the figures that we have in front of us, even at a quarter of a mil, I mean, we're talking a, a ten-year-plus plan here to get to, to the figures that we should be, we should be at. Okay, so wait now, if I was to entertain the thought that we were going to stay with twenty-two-eight, are we all in favor of that?
You said eight or eight-five?
Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two-eight-five.
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't have that decimal calculation on here.
Gary, do you want a motion for this, or do we, do you just want a, uh, a general consensus or what?
No, it needs to be a motion to set.
So, so what, what I'd like to do here, uh, before you move on, um, what's going to happen is as you, as you select your mill rate, you're going to basically set the tax commitment, right? So what I'd like to do is I have, as you choose your mill rate, it affects a couple of, a couple of things. It's going to affect, which is, uh, very inconsequential amount of money, line nine, the TIF plan, uh, under the assessments, line nine, I got to go back and fix that. So as I knew that mill rate up or down is going to achieve that eleven thousand, ninety dollars by a few bucks. So I will have these forms ready for you to sign tonight, okay? Uh, I got to go back in, put all this information back into our, our municipal accounting system, put plug in the mill rate, the new TIF amount, print out those forms, and you'll, and have you guys come back in and sign. So what I would say is, um, I would like to, uh, make Monday the tax commitment date, Monday of the, it's Monday.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen?
Yep, Monday the sixteen.
I would say.
You're good.
You know, give us, give us tomorrow to get, once we decide to go ahead and get everything ready, um, that Mon- Monday the sixteen would be the tax commitment date. Uh, for the reason, give us a little bit of time, and then for the other reason, I'm a little superstitious to commit taxes on front of your feet, so.
Dan, do you have a number you want to be in?
No.
A one mil, two mil, three mil decrease?
No, whatever you guys decide.
Okay, three mil decrease.
Three mil decrease, okay.
Bang.
No, so I, then I, I'll, are you, were you going to make a motion or?
Or either one of us here?
Yep.
So I guess I can make a motion to set the tax, uh, commitment for Monday to twenty-two-point-eight-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Opposed? I reckon show that four were for and one against. Okay, moving on to article four, to consider the town's compliance of executive order sixteen F Y twenty-twenty-one.
So I bring this to your attention, I did send this out to, by email last week, uh, of the, of the, uh, the most recent executive order strengthening the mask mandate and social distancing. So we know that cases are on the rise, and I think they're going to be looking at things a little more closely now. Uh, my hands are tied. Whether or not I can decide to not abide by these and, and tell our staff to produce things a certain way and, and how we're going to, uh, you know, let our patrons come into our, our facilities. Uh, so I felt that it was worth while to bring this to the board's attention. Uh, we have essentially what is a mandate for masks. There's in public settings, uh, and there's also some language here for public facilities. So, uh, I think that I'd like to have a discussion, uh, on this, uh, to see where we, we find ourselves, um, on the matter. Uh, I did ask the ambulance department to be here, uh, Eric is here representing, Eric's here, his department. I've asked Tiff to be here because I, I, we provide a, a service, uh, an emergency service, an ambulance service, it's a critical service, and we also service other communities that we are contractually obligated to do. Three other communities, so. And Eric has been fantastic, he, he keeps me apprised of everything that's going on. And we have discussions often enough about readiness, should staff become, you know, exposed? And, and what kind of strain that we put in our workforce in the ambulance department. And so Eric is, uh, he's up on it, we talk a lot. Uh, we want, I wanted it here so we can have a, a discussion here to see whether or not, uh, you all have concerns, uh, for continuity of services. Um, and I know that, you know what, we asked Ross to be here tonight because if there's going to be an enforcement of masks, then we need to have our law enforcement guys, uh, people here to talk about that. So with that said, I'll open it up for discussion. I'm interested in what you all have, what your thoughts are. Um, that would obviously guide us, um, in our decision-making. Now, we did post our buildings, our municipal buildings for required masks. Um, we haven't had any situations where people refusing to wear masks, but it, it could, it could happen, you know? But I just, um, you know, it's, it's a touchy subject, right? Everybody has a, a right to their opinion, um, but I feel like, you know, we need to, as a board, you know, we need a little bit of help here, to guide us in our decision-making on this matter. So with that said, I'm going to open it up.
Does anybody have any, uh, issues or concerns about this?
Eric, I mean, I think that we are already pretty much in line with the governor. I mean, is there anything really specific here that you think we should be aware of at this point, um, that we're not doing?
Not really, uh. The thing that we, we, we'd be, we'd be most important right now would be try to minimize exposures, obviously. Uh, you know, when it comes to either traveling, uh.
Minimize, I'm sorry, minimize what?
Minimize exposure, the potential for exposures such as traveling, you know, if you decide that they could trip down or even do some Christmas shopping or whatever. Uh, or even having visitation from people from away, you know, that have the, the high potential for bringing this up here to us. Um, that would be our biggest thing that's a little bit more out of our control. As far as masking and head hygiene and social distancing, and everybody's doing a great job with that. And it's, 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 it's difficult to enforce, uh, all the restrictions that are imposed, uh, on the public, if you will. As far as us is concerned, everybody in my department is, is, is following the rules or their mask came up. Uh, every call, we're wearing N-ninety-five masks, we're going to the max right, right off the bat. Whether the patient fits the bill for COVID symptoms or not, we're wearing N-ninety-five because, uh, it's been proven that people that are, haven't, aren't even sick anyway, you know, and they are contagious. So we got to protect ourselves from that too because it is unknown, we do not know, so. Uh, no, I mean, I, I think what we're all right now, uh, from that standpoint, we're doing okay. It's, it's more travel, and not just us, it's everybody. I mean, I mean, you still have people going abroad and going Quebec, believe it or not, somebody recently in Quebec. Uh, but down south, I mean, people are traveling regardless right now, so.
I think we're all seeing, uh, we're all seeing that second wave start to hit a country and even the state of Maine at this point. And I think it's just because we've been, we've been dealing with this for six months now, so we're getting a little lax to be now and then, you know, family gatherings and traveling and, and so, uh, so it's, it's coming back at us kind of hard.
Yep, it is hard, holidays are coming, it's, it's, it's a tough one, yeah, absolutely.
I think one of the things we should do to keep ourselves safe, keep the town employees safe, is probably put a, a plan or a policy together to ensure that even employees wear masks, but not twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I think if they can maintain a six-foot distance from their coworkers, they can work without a mask. But if they have to go to somebody's desk and work with them, or if they have to serve somebody on the public, then maybe put on a mask and wear your mask while you're, you know.
Which is what we've been doing.
Right, right.
Which is what the governor has mandated, right? And that's, regardless of social business.
Right, and that's what we've been doing.
Well, I think you guys just said two different things.
Oh, wait.
Jay, Jason said if they can stay six feet apart, they can keep it off. But the mandate, the mandate right now is.
Regardless of that.
Regardless of whether you can.
Yeah, you should have a mask on, if you're in public, you should have a mask on regardless, is what she said.
Well, if you're in public, right, but if you're at work in your work environment and you're not dealing with the public, from my understanding, that, that's not being out in public, like going down the street or going to the store or anything like that. Now, if you're a cashier at a store, you're in public, you're at the cash register. But someone like.
Tom office staff, for instance.
They're, they're behind a barrier in their office, just like if you look at the paper mill where the employees aren't wearing masks in the mill, they're only wearing them within that six-foot distance, or if they're in public in the front, like the security guards who are out front are wearing masks, things like that. My understanding from what I've looked at is if you're in that work environment where you're, you're isolated, you don't need the mask, you're not technically in public.
Suppose that could be interpreted several or a few different ways.
And I mean, I don't, I have no issues with them wearing it all the time, all the time. We've got kids in school right now who are wearing them from, you know, eight in the morning until three in the afternoon.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it can, it can be done, but.
Point taken, I, I, um, I mean, it would be a rare situation for, for any public, uh, employee here that, that doesn't have contact with the public or with, with other employees on a regular basis, but. I, I don't, I don't, I don't go through the town office or the municipal buildings all that often to know that maybe there are some that are secluded there that don't see anybody all day, and yeah, if you're alone all day, then, you know, maybe you could take that mask off for, for the time being, but that would be the only situation.
Right.
Um, so this was only a point of discussion, we don't need to do.
Point of discussion, I think that, I think we all know what.
I see you.
Okay, so there, there's a couple of things that I, I, I just want to say, whatever, if you guys, you guys can, can choose your own. Um, as far as an employer, how I see it is that, and, and I, I don't want everybody mad at me, but I believe employees in, in the municipality should be wearing the mask. Um, it's the governor's mandate, but it's also because if Natalie comes in with COVID and gives it to Amy and gives it to, then we're shut down. Um, I think if we're going to look at it as an employer to keep the business viable, that's what we should be doing. Um, as far as the public, I just want to have the enforcement discussion because we had this discussion with the prior board. And the prior board said pretty much like, we don't want to put that on our officers to try to, you know.
Enforce.
Enforce, so, um, I, I just want to make sure it, that we're all still on the same page because, I mean, if Ross gets a phone call from someone that says so-and-so was at shop and save, or we're here without a mask, I mean, I want to make sure that he knows that we're not trying to obligate him to go and.
Right.
Enforce, like he can educate and he can, I, I don't know, Ross, is that kind of?
I guess, um, in the law enforcement community, the way we're looking at this is, um, we're going to put the responsibility on the stores that they can refuse service if they want to. They refuse service, they'll make the accommodations for the person. And if we have to respond, it's going to be for either disorderly conduct or criminal trespass if they don't want to leave the store.
Yeah, yeah, because mandate says may deny service, so it's really up to the business if they want to allow someone in their private, um. I, I just want to make sure if we're all on the same page still, I mean, I don't want, you know, to find out two weeks from now that you expected them to enforce it or, you know.
No, I think they've been doing pretty good now at, at only enforcing it when some, a store calls saying, hey, this individual doesn't want to leave, they don't want to wear a mask, and I think that's been working great. Um, we should have, you know, the town office should feel comfortable enough that if somebody comes in, doesn't want to leave, that they can call and do the same thing, trespass them.
Well, okay, and that's a decision we should have then, because it says we may deny service, but I don't, I personally don't feel like we shouldn't be. Like that shouldn't be on them to have to tell people to leave if they don't have a mask on. I mean.
I think, I think that it's important to note that we'll always provide the service. It's just, it's just that if they're, if we're going to require masks and they don't want to make, come into the building, then we're going to have to do, do it differently, you know?
Find a way to provide service.
Like we did when we were shut down, you know, we could do it by phone, we could do it, you know, curb, at the, at the curb. Uh, we will accommodate, you know, if we're going to say, you know, mask, no entry, we're going to accommodate that transaction somehow. So that's not the question here, it's, the question is, uh, do we allow people to come in without masks? And so now, like, what have you been seeing lately, uh, most people are wearing their mask. And we're not seeing, we're really not seeing any, any issues.
There are a few that were down, but I told them to put it up.
Fine. Yeah. Just give it, that's all I'm saying. I mean, at this point, I'm seeing that we're pretty much following the rules here. We're not going to put down any more orders for anybody to, to follow that, that I can, uh, I can see.
So the other thing that Gary had asked me, uh, to, to look into and to, to do some research as far as like travel restrictions, if any other departments, uh, have, have those travel restrictions on their employees, anything like that. A lot of the services I've contacted don't have anything there, they're just following me and the MS guidance for return to work for employees and they've left the town, whatever, Caribou Fire did have, uh, fourteen-day quarantines for all their staff if they should choose to leave the county or have company come visit them or something like that. Uh, they have imposed that on their, their, their staff.
I'm sorry, if they leave the county?
Yeah, yeah, if they leave the county and they go to Bangor, Portland, wherever, you know, farther south where there's, where the hotspots are, uh, they, when they come back to, to Maine, to North Carolina, they'll be quarantined for fourteen days before they can return to work.
See, that's the, that's the crux of, of the issue, it's not only, it's, it's the safety side of it, but it's also, it's also the financial side of it, so when you, and, and the strain it puts on, on the service that we provide. So if somebody leaves, um, and for whatever reason they come in contact or by some policy, they went beyond the distance, if it's the state's guidance, they go out of state and they have to self-quarantine or test, you know, it's that, are part of the expectation that we're going to continue to pay the employee during that period or, and it's not very clear. So I, I don't want to be, I, I, I certainly don't think that we need to be considering mileage restrictions right now. Uh, but I think we'll, we'll have discussions with the staff to say, look, you know, keep in mind that it's tough and we need, we need all of our employees, uh, so we can continue to provide services. Uh, scary sometimes because whenever we have a suspected case, we're, we're all sitting down looking at who else could that person come in contact with in our, in that respective department, and then we're, you know, we have a concern here. So we've had a couple of incidents where we thought, and luckily there was nothing, but it did really cause you to look around and say, wow, well, you, 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 there, 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 there. And, and it, it, it go, it mushroomed pretty fast, so, um, I think that, you know, we can have some thoughtful discussions with our staff, say, look, you know, if you don't have to go too far, don't, and, and try to be safe, uh, even outside of the workplace, uh, because we do have to provide services regardless.
I'd like to add too that I'm going to be getting, uh, EMA, the Emergency Management, emergency management has obtained BiMax now test kits for services. So I'm going to be getting forty kits that are going to be given to the, to, to the departments that are certified in laboratory studies. And a lot of the services do that because they have, they, when we do, like, sure, like, you folks testing, you have that certification, which we do all, so we're going to be getting forty test kits. Uh, that's going to be used for EMS. Uh, that's gonna be used for E M S, police, fire personnel only. Uh, should there be anybody that, uh, fears they've come into contact and then they fall ill, I can only test them once they've become ill. Uh, and the reason why M E M S and E M A have decided to try to get these kits was to try to minimize time out of work for employees that that may have, may, may, you know, they come in one day, or they call me up one morning and say, I don't feel too well, like, you know, I got a snipper or whatever. I'll be, okay, we're gonna set up a, a date, a place to meet, or a time, a time to meet, and I'll be able to test them. And if it's a negative test, you know, then we're okay. This person can go home, recover for a day or two, and then come to work. But if they test positive, then I'll have to send them to the hospital, and then they have to get a laboratory, uh, confirmed positive test as well before we can actually say they're positive. So we'll be getting these test kits, they're free charge, and we're not getting, we're not paying for these at all. Uh, emergency management, it's providing those for us. Uh, so this is a good thing for us, but if there's a, like, like I mentioned, I mean, I can't test anybody until they're sick, 'cause really, if if I know I was exposed yesterday, two to fourteen days is your incubation period. Okay, so there's, you could test somebody five days in, that's been exposed, and you'll get, you'll get a negative test. But day seven, they fall sick, you test them and they're positive, so it's, it's one of those things, you, it's a little hard to rely on that test, uh, if they're not ill. So that's why you gotta wait till they actually fall sick. That's predominantly when you become most contagious anyway, so.
Well, yeah, at that point, I mean, you might have infected everybody around you, and it's already too late. You know, you, now you gotta go catch everybody else that they've been in contact with.
It's like Gary mentioned, this mushroom is very, very, very quickly. Uh, so we have some capabilities now to at least start testing some people, like, as far as internally within our departments, but uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's good to have that, but it's not definitive either, so I just thought, I thought, like, guys know that we will be getting that at least, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, one discussion there. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, there's, I I, sorry, I'm gonna take you back a second. Um, just for my own, does, do you have ability to do a Zoom meeting?
Nope.
Like, at some point, if this gets to a point that we go back to Zoom like we were before, we need to just, I guess, get ahead of that in case in two, three weeks from now, we say, holy shit, we have to do, you know, a Zoom meeting, we, like, we need to consider get ahead of it a little bit. Can you come to my house and we'll stay six feet apart?
Long arms.
Might tick my dog on you, but.
Poisoned. Was that it?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. I just, uh.
Going on to other business to consider the appointment for a vacancy on the planning board.
So we still have a few vacancies. Uh, we went through some different times when we advertised, just to try to drum up some interest for, for planning board members. Not been successful, but, uh, we, I know we've been working, working really hard to try to find some people that are interested. We do have a person who's interested. He's, uh, Mark Medor. He's our super, sewer department superintendent. He's expressed interest. Uh, it's not a, it's not an issue for employees to serve on a, on a, on the planning board. In fact, uh, Seth Logasi is an employee that found that he served on the planning board. So, Ma- Mark, according to your packet, his, uh, his request, I've asked him to make that formal request of us. Uh, he is interested in serving on the planning board. I think he would be fantastic. He's very diligent. He does, uh, he does the research, so, uh, that's for you folks to decide. If you would like to appoint Mark for the planning board, that's for the remainder of a term that expires, uh, next spring, June.
Make a motion to approve Mark Medor's request for the remainder of the term.
I will second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Does that leave any more seats open?
Two more. Uh, we have, yeah, we have two more opening. We have some alternates that are opening as well. We know, we know, it's got some ideas.
I got some ideas. Natalie, could you write Ben Google's name down, 'cause he said a couple of times that he'd be willing to serve somewhere, and somebody just needs to reach out to him.
Seth, Seth did. I talked to Seth, uh,
Okay.
two or three days ago, and I think he's switched jobs.
Right.
And I, I think with Seth, he would better now, he would not be interested.
I just don't wanna forget about him. And that's somebody else who he's gonna contact. Another person I asked, but
All right, other, uh, business to consider, to open the, uh, consider bids for the town-owned property in Frenchville.
So we did, uh, you have a copy of the bid ad that we're out, as, as per the terms approved at town meeting, uh, the authorization to go ahead and sell that property. Uh, we got one bid on that, that was received on, on October thirty, one fifty-five P N, uh, P M. So, I would be honored, will be, will want to do.
Okay. I'm not ready for the news.
They don't trust me with knives. I can open it if you want.
I'm left-handed, of course.
See, that's why I'm holding my hands.
It's open.
Oh my god.
Oh, so you're not gonna?
Think you're a tough reader.
I know I am. You got, I don't have a picture.
So the bid is, is by Ed Pelletier, uh, construction company from Madawaska, Maine. Uh, they have submitted their, their deposit, their ten percent deposit. They have submitted a bid, uh, Ed Pelletier, it's, it's hereby submitted a bid in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents uh, for the parcel identified on map eleven, lot thirteen D, in Frenchville, and owned by the town of Madawaska, signed by its president, Philip Surway, October thirty, two thousand and twenty. So the, uh, it has met our minimum bid requirement, which was forty thousand, uh, and they have submitted their ten percent deposit, which is, uh, forty-six, fifty-five, fifteen. So I see no reason not to accept this bid.
So I need a motion to accept the bid?
Yeah, I made a motion to accept the bid.
Second.
To your side.
And I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. I have one other item here that I'm concerned that I wanna bring up to the board. This concerns one of our board members, Mr. Dan Daigle. So the issues that I have in front of me and what have been given to me would be these four. Dan, you persist in putting out misleading information to your townspeople. You have no regard for the employees of the town, your employees. You choose not to inform yourself of the town's business and current affairs. You choose to serve a handful of people, not what you took in oath to do when you became the selectman. So, I have a few things here that I'd like to pass out. Certainly, the first items are issues that concern comments that you made about our town manager.
Yep.
Here. So this is kind of a code of ethics that town managers follow. And certainly, item number seven is an item that I want you to focus on. Refrain from all political activities which undermine public confidence in professional administrators. Refrain from participation in the election of members, the members of the employing legislative body. There was a comment that was brought up, um, pertaining to Susan Collins.
Absolutely.
So let me, let me just bring up how these issues came out and, and, and what you knew and what you didn't know. So when Gary was made aware that Susan was coming to town, he made, he made Susan Collins' assistant, Tricia House, aware that uh, because of his position, he could not take a stand, but he was willing to say that maybe some of our board members would, would, would accommodate her. So, that was brought to me, and I told her, I said, for sure that I, that I would help out and I would do what I could. Um, and she said, we're gonna take care of the lead on this. Um, we're certainly running short on time. Um, so I don't really need you to do anything at this point. So she was advising us that, that she had made the contacts. She had decided that because of shortness of time, she didn't want to bring more people there. Whether it was COVID, whether it was a shortness of time, she emailed me back and she said, and it's on record, that I was not to do anything more than what she had already done. And, and that's what we followed. That's where we went. Now, of course, discussion wasn't there, and so certainly beyond that point, and the next day, the comments started coming out, but, but, um, that's partially because she advised me not to. Um, I certainly could have let the rest of this board know. Um, it was between you and I that we were asked to go, and it was left at that. So, um, but this kind of explains their direction. It wasn't 'cause we didn't wanna do it, because I reached out to her and I said, you know, I'm more than willing to make phone calls, to get people there. She was adamant to say, I've already done that. I've contacted the folks that, that I, that I'd like to have with us. Um, we're gonna be with you for just a short amount of time. Uh, don't do anything. And so that's how, that's how that went down. It wasn't 'cause we didn't want it, doesn't mean that one was a Democrat or a Republican that we decided we were not gonna do something, which is what we see some of the comments come out, that, that, that this was done on purpose. So again, it, it misleads the public, you know, and it's, it's information that you're putting out there on social media and, and it's very hurtful and it, and, and it can hurt somebody's career. All right, another, uh, item that comes from M T C M A. Again, um, this letter is addressed to me and I think the first three paragraphs here probably relate as much to our issues here as anything else. Um, I don't know that I need to read those out loud, but I'd like you guys to read them if you could.
I think you should. You're presenting this in a public, um, you should read it.
Okay. So it's addressed to me, Mr. Seer. Our association was made aware of recent comments expressed by a member of the Madawaska Board of Selectmen in regards to town manager Gary M. Picard's decision to not attempt a campaign visit in the town of Madawaska with a person running for the United States Senate. These comments were posted publicly on social media via the selectmen. The comments expressed by the individual board member were, in our opinion, ingenuous, inflammatory, and resulted in potential irreparable damage to the reputation and livelihood of one member, Mr. Picard. As public managers, we abide by a strict code of ethics that states very clearly, refrain from all political activities which undermine public confidence in professional administrators. Refrain from participation in the election of members of the employing legislative body. Our guidelines for this intent are very specific. So again, it specifies exactly what Mr. Picard can do and cannot do. And again, a lot of information was stated on social media that destroyed his character. Do you care to comment on any of these?
Do I care to comment?
Yeah.
Do I have the floor?
You have the floor.
I certainly do wanna comment. Our U.S. Senator Susan Collins mentioned the name of our town, Madawaska, on the U.S. Senate floor. Senator Susan Collins was instrumental in funneling thirty-six million dollars to this town for the construction of an international bridge. The construction of this bridge is going to stir up the economy in this town over the next two years like nothing ever has. And I don't care what this little outfit has to say. If we are gone, if we are gone beyond the point that our town manager cannot come to just shake hands and greet, he is not participating in the election like this letter says. If we are gone to the point where our town manager cannot come shake the hand of our U.S. Senator that has looked for our well-being in this community, we are far below what I think that we have sunk down to. As far as social media, I wanted for all of you to have it clear in your mind that social media is social media. Facebook is Facebook. It's not the gospel. And if you have trouble with Facebook, if you have trouble with social media, there's a little button on your phone that says off. Just go off. I make no apology for what I stated on Facebook. I make no apology for the misbehavior, as far as I'm concerned, on the town manager's part, and I think it's downright disrespectful that our town manager would not come out just to greet Susan Collins. And now that you people are on the attack mode, I would like to address what is out on social media as of yesterday, where the town of Madawaska entertained some decorating of two pickle parks when we did not do a single thing for our United States veterans in the town of Madawaska. And I think it's downright shameful, and it, 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 it all points to a lot of good leadership. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna tell you right to your face and to the rest of my board members here, if it is my resignation that you want for speaking up for the townspeople, you say it loud and clear right here, right now, individually, in front of your constituents, and I will be happy to give you my resignation here tonight. But other than that, I make no apology for what I said or what I did on behalf of the constituents of the town of Madawaska.
So let me, um, just read to you something that you put out on Facebook here pertaining to, um, town employees, and it's addressed to Sandra Peterson. Yes, corruption runs deep. We see it even on the local levels everywhere. That is the very reason that I ran for the Board of Selectmen in Madawaska. Unfortunately, due to the lack of support from the general public and the members of the board, all four are not looking for the best inches for the town. All have personal agendas, including the manager. This is on social media. So let's all go trick-or-treat at the pickle park, or pickle parks, while some residents are drinking questionable water with very little help from the town. The final comment says Gary needs to go.
Can I make a comment then?
Yep.
I, I just wanna make something nice and clear about the decorations that went on in town. One of our residents thanked these people. Uh, the Madawaska Beautification Committee is, is just that, it's a committee of individuals from the town of Madawaska who got together to generously donate their time on their free time to decorate our town for us. Um, so I would again like to thank them for what they did. Um, yes, they chose a holiday to do it on, a day that they were all available to do. It means no disrespect whatsoever to our veterans. I worked on Veterans Day at my job. I still respect the veterans. I still have veterans in my family. So I don't wanna discredit the hard work of these individuals. So I don't want to discredit the hard work of these individuals just because it's down on a holiday.
My love?
I agree, but I think we should have done something for the veterans. Some sort of flags. There's nothing on town. There's the wreaths for Christmas. There could have been some centers somewheres with a display of recognition for the veterans. And there's a lot of veterans in this town. My father's one. There's many of them. And I just found it disrespectful. There's nothing. There was nothing going through town, not a flag, nothing. That's shameful on our part for not doing something. So I hope in future that somehow somewheres we have flagged, we have something commemorating that day, whether it's Memorial Day, Veterans Day, whatever. It needs to be. Something has to be done. That's all how I feel.
Do you have anything with respect to Dan?
With Dan? I respect that he has his own opinions, which is fine. But there's a time and a place for everything and you have to take your hat off when you're selecting. You cannot have it both ways. As a public citizen, you say what you want, bash what you want, it doesn't matter, scroll by, it's freedom of the... But you're bashing an employee? That puts us in a really, really sticky situation. And you may not agree with me, which is fine. I'm entitled to my job. But it's just not right to do that. And I personally took offense. If you think I have a personal agenda, I don't. I'm here simply at the will of the taxpayers to do my best that I can do. And you're not making our job any easier by bashing somebody on Facebook.
Yeah, I do have something towards Dan. Dan, I actually tried hard to work with you. I met up with you on multiple occasions, one-on-one, to have discussions and to try to work things out and get your point of view on things. But recently, on a few occasions, you came to me and dangled the carrot in front of me and you said, "I have some information, but I can't tell you. You gotta dig around. You gotta find it by yourself." And that kind of upset me because we're here to work as a board. When Lori has information, she shares it with the board. When Mano has information, she shares it with the board. When Doug has information, he shares it with the board. We're here to work together. We're not here to point fingers and say, "I have some dirt on so-and-so, but you need to go talk to somebody else to figure it out." You know, we need to work together. We need to share information. We need to help each other. I tried to work with you and I still want to work with you. But we need to work together. We need to understand each other and help each other out. And I think the first part of that is respecting everybody. And that does include the town manager and every employee in this town. Because we're not individuals here. We are the town trying to provide a service to our townspeople. And we need to unite and do that all together.
Lori?
So Dan and I, like I sat back and listened while you spoke. Are you gonna listen or are you gonna just write or...?
Can I address Mr. Jason first? I can show all of you here on my phone on Messenger four items that that gentleman sent to me, private message about Gary Picard, things he wanted to address an executive session. And when we walked into executive session, he never said boo. Four things that he showed me about Gary Picard that he wasn't satisfied with his performance. But when he's before Gary Picard and before you people, it's all praise and honor and it's all good. It's all good. What I have on Messenger on my phone, I've got enough there to sink a whole bunch of you. But I'm not gonna go down that road.
Those four items you're talking about, Dan, I discussed with our chairman. I discussed with our co-chair. And I was actually in Gary's office with our chairman when we discussed those items as well. So I'm not hiding anything. You're more than welcome to make those public. Secondly, that I have had, I have discussed one-on-one with the individual I had questions about and with our chair.
You bet.
And they can all attest to that. I did not go out to the public and say, "I've got these issues with Gary and I'm gonna set it up." The issues that I did have have been addressed, they've been taken care of, and they've been corrected. Yes, there may be still some lingering things. We're not all perfect, okay? But it's following the right process to get things accomplished. That's what we need to do and that's what I did with my items I had issues with.
Secondly, this thing about me holding that carrot in front of you?
Yep.
I was privy to some information. It came my way. It came my way in the strictest of confidentiality. And you were tugging at my short tails to tell you what it was. And I was not at liberty. And I have had discussion with another board member here that told me that I shouldn't be running with hearsay and rumor. And I have to respect that as well. But until we had paperwork on our lap, I was not at liberty to divulge any information to you.
That's how you feel.
So with that being said, obviously, I am wasting my time here with this board. There you go. To my constituents, it's been a pleasure serving you. I had the highest of intentions to work for you. But I was told here tonight that your tongue is tied here as a selectman and that if you're on the outside, you can do what you want and you can say what you want. Well, I am now officially on the outside. Mr. Chairman, I ask you to read that publicly to our constituents.
Can I, can I, Dan?
No, you may not.
Listen, you and I have worked together.
No, you may not.
Been honest with each other.
Yes, we have.
I have never...
I thank you. I thank you for your respect. I thank you for...
Why don't you just sit down and work with us instead of making... You're gonna take your ball. You're gonna go home.
Oh, you really want that signature, don't you, Mr. Seer? Well, you know, this... Do you want my signature as much as the hot top that you got right to your building?
Dan, nobody here has asked you to resign. And I just finished saying I want to continue to work with you.
You know, this is by your own doing. Nobody was gonna ask you to resign here tonight.
No, I know, but you've made it perfectly clear. Thank you very much.
So his note says, "I do hereby resign as selectman of the town of Madawaska, effective immediately November 12, 2020. Signed, Dan Daigle."
I, can I, can I, can I say something now? Really? So I want to talk because I want to like talk to the people sitting here. And here's... Here's what I have found seems to go on here. This is a huge systematic issue. You know, these issues that Jason had were not with Gary as a manager. You come in, you're maybe a very liberal board. You have five people with different ideas. And everybody wants to go their own route. And there are procedures set in place or there are ideas that are pushed forward. And the board changes. And Gary has to roll with that and try to shift. And this happens to every town manager, every time a board changes, every time somebody quits and you put a new board member on. The makeup of the board goes from liberal to conservative and then, you know, everyone, business people, to people who are more, you know, to the social side of things. And it's just, it's always different. And I found in the last year, working with him, there are a lot of times that I'll say, geez, you know, why are we doing this? This doesn't make sense like this. And he'll show me. I take the time and I read. Here's minutes from this meeting and here's the documentation from how... And here is how we got here today. Okay, this all makes sense. So then let's have a discussion and see, are we gonna go this way or are we gonna change it? And so when they say there's issues, I don't feel like there have been issues with the manager and the way he does his job. There are just policy and procedure issues and all different and we try to change them. Whether Dan's here or not, I'm still gonna speak to his Facebook stuff. I mean, this whole Susan Collins thing and him attacking Gary on social media. I mean, he's a Republican, so I don't know where this whole Democrat thing comes from. And I, Doug kind of gave you a hard time. I really came down hard on Doug and said, "As the chair, having this information..." And he's the political representative of the town, not Gary. Gary's an administrator. Gary is supposed to run the departments of the town and Doug is supposed to take the lead on these types of things with Susan Collins. And we all gave Doug a really hard time because he didn't let us know this was happening. And, you know, I've kind of pushed him on his leadership and his communication with the rest of us. And to me, that has nothing to do with what Gary's doing. So I just want to put that out there in public. These accusations of corruption and personal agendas. I have no personal agenda. I don't know what people think I'm gaining from this, except a lot of friggin' drama and misery. So I don't know. I support employees. If people want to go out there and be attacking them on social media, I really wish people would come in and ask questions and just talk to us. And you know what? I know what they're on Facebook. I will give my phone number to anybody who wants it, anyone who has a question. There's a group out there. We've all seen the videos. And I talk to them. I give them information and give them whatever they want. I don't think any of them could ever prove that I've ever been dishonest with them or hidden anything. So I really hope that, you know, the four of us can pull together and move this town forward. And I'm disappointed that Dan chose to leave, but I guess it is what it is. That's it. Sorry. I don't... I can talk for two hours if you let me.
You know, the intent here tonight was only to make him aware of the damage that he was causing, which I don't know that he really understood, that social media can really... He kind of just sets it aside like it's no big deal and it doesn't really matter. But it does, you know? It makes a big difference what you're saying out there because you can really stain somebody, you can really hurt, especially public officials. And there was no need for him to be doing that in the position that he was sitting in. So my intent tonight was only to discuss this with him, that we were going to try to make some resolve from this issue, but not to have him resign.
I have another thing for Gary Talks. The water issue was mentioned on Facebook too. And I just want to say, for anybody who wants the information, it's out there. It's been given to all of us. Unfortunately, one of us refused emails and updates and didn't, you know, come get information out of the mailbox and stuff like that. But Gary was accused of doing very little. I happen to have talked to the son-in-law. One of the homeowners is very involved. I mean, there's messages that were actually sent to Dan that said Gary Picard, you know, did a lot. And there are notes about this water issue from the 28th of October, from the very date that it was discovered, reported to the town. And there are notes going through every test that was done and all of the work that's being done. And so to say that Gary has done nothing or very little and is allowing people to drink bad water or questionable water, it's just unfortunate. And I hope that all of you guys that are reading posts and comments out there, before you comment and agree and, you know, decide to add your own shovel full of dirt on top, maybe you could ask them questions first and not believe everything you read.
Okay.
Now I'm done. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, so I would first of all like to thank you for supporting me throughout all this. What is going on now recently? Seems to be part of a larger plan with what has been a two, two and a half year campaign of harassment. It's coordinated. It's direct. It's planned. Okay, we've seen it ebb and flow. We go through periods of quietness and all of a sudden it blows up again. If people have concerns about the way things are being done in our organization with me, they can take it, they can take that issue up to any board member. They can call us at the town office. They can ask to be heard. They can ask for the information. We'll provide them the information that they need so they can make an informed judgment with the information that they have. But they don't. Nobody calls us for that information. But yet, they spew it on Facebook. They blow it up. They light fires. They watch it burn. And I've seen for way too long now the discourse that it causes on my board. It's meant to disrupt governance and cause doubt and discredit, okay? We have lost two high-quality employees here in this organization. They couldn't stand it anymore, okay? I miss them terribly. They were an asset to this organization and they're gone. It's unnecessary. Again, everybody has a right to express a concern. And if you think there is something wrong with the way we're doing things here, come and see us, ask us for the information. We'll get you what you want and then form an opinion and then put it on Facebook. But no. So I'm frustrated, I'm tired. It's been going on too long. I've been attacked by one of my employers who never gave us an opportunity. He never let the record show that Mr. Daigle never had one step foot in my office, not once. And my staff can attest to that. To come get information directly, factual information for what's going on in our community. And yet, and yet, the individual chooses to go out throughout the community and spew misinformation, okay? And not give me the benefit of coming to me and asking me or anybody who works with me or anybody else in your organization, what's going on if there's a concern. That's not what he's interested in here, okay? There's a bigger plan and I know what that is. So I want to thank my board for coming on. Mr. Daigle accused other people here tonight, okay? Of having skeletons in their own closets. And I will stand by that Ben right there, Mr. Boucher, and say that he has come to me when he got on the board. I believe this guy has the best interest of this town. You know why? Because he came to see me in the presence of the board chair and said, "This is what it is. I regret it. We're moving forward. Are we gonna move forward together?" Yes, we are. And you know what? When we first, this board first got together, there was all kinds of accusations swirling about my job performance. And we were gonna have an executive session. We had to wreck that room over there. And we all sat down, okay? And the vice chair encouraged me to wear my emotions on my sleeve and lay it all out there. And I did. I laid it all out, what I had to endure the last two years, what I did in this community, okay? And all of these board members, Mano, Jason, Lori, Dan, an executive session, Doug, we all made a pledge. We were gonna move forward and not look backward for the betterment of this town. Where are we at today? Okay? We are fortunate to have four people here who see through the smoke. I consider myself lucky to work with these individuals. If not for them, where would we be? So I want to thank you all personally. And I want the record to show that my office is open for anybody who has any concerns. All I ask is you come see a board member or come to my office. If you don't like the way something's running in town, like the flags, for instance, maybe perhaps a better way to address the concern would be to call somebody to the town office or ask a board member. But no, let's blow it up on Facebook. Ah, let's blow it up on Facebook. That's not the concern. The concern is to light fires. That's what the concern is. And that's what we've been dealing with. It's a play on people's emotions, okay? It's part of another agenda. Well, you know what? People in this town see through it. They see right through it. And right now, okay, I'll tell you what's going on. There's a group of people in town committed to moving this town forward and beautifying and making our downtown vibrant. And you know what? We're succeeding. People are bringing us decorations. They're going by and they're happy that we're doing what we're doing. A collaborative effort of the town, the rec department, the chamber, people coming in, forming a group, getting along and getting stuff done for the betterment of the community. What's not to like about that? But you know what? Whenever something good goes on, okay? Somebody tries to light a fire. Don't look here. Look over here. This is the problem. Don't look at the success. Look at the failure. Our chamber director, okay, was attacked, okay? Was attacked. Why? Because of the flags and the Veterans Day. Yes, could we have fed flags to offer Veterans Day? Absolutely. Yes, could we have had flags up for Veterans Day? Absolutely. Feel, shame on me and shame on all of us here for not having flags up for Veterans Day. We will do better this time. But it wasn't because we didn't think about it. It's because it hasn't been the practice for the last ten years or so. There was a time when we had flags up for Veterans Day. And previous administrators stopped doing that, and they would have the flags taken down after harvest because the wind would wreak havoc on the flags, and they were breaking and falling to the ground. Okay? We can do better. We will do better. But that's not the issue here. Yes, and I agree with you 100%. We're gonna do better on the flags. But that's not what the issue is here. The issue is here, okay? Don't look at this. Look at this. Blow it up on Facebook. Well, not a 9.9% of the people in this community see right through it. And I, and I, and I will go on to say that when the noise gets loud and the complaints start to ramp up, it's because we know we're doing our job, and they don't like it. They don't like to see that we're succeeding. We're gonna continue to succeed to move this town forward. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Russ.
I just wanna say on behalf of the police department that the remaining board members have the police department's support, and we have confidence that you guys are looking out for what's in the best interest of the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah, and on behalf of the ambulance as well, our full support, and, and we're proud to be serving you guys. And we look forward to moving forward with you guys as well.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you. Any other comments?
You don't need none. I know you people got a hard time to hear, but try and keep your mouths out so I can hear. Well, you can hear. You know, it's just I come out to bring out certain opinions while I'm in here. But something, we have to try to bring it forward as much as possible as we can. So that means we still gotta work together. So that's my opinion for today.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I just wanna say the same thing with the fire department. I mean, we were right behind your guys. We appreciate everything you do for the fire department, and we just, you know, we just wanna say we're there with you.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else?
Mr. Board Chair, this board would have to accept that letter of resignation for it to be binding.
So I need a motion to accept Dan Daigle's resignation as of this evening, November 12. Do I have a motion?
If, and, and just in all fairness, if we decide not to accept it, can we work with him to see if he's interested in, in working with us to move forward? Or are we just looking at saying, "Let's give up and move on"? I mean, I'm...
I don't know if I know how to proceed at this point since there is no, there is no motion.
I'm not, we can't really accept this resignation then.
No, I, I'm willing to make a motion if, if that's what we wanna do. But I just wanna see, I mean, is anybody willing to work with this and see if we can...
I, listen, I, I... Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly didn't wanna see him go anywhere. I mean, being called corrupt and saying I have an agenda and accusing me of things too was like, I, I, you know, we've had many conversations that I would've liked to work with him on things, and he has great ideas. I, I don't...
I'd like to give him some time to think it over before we accept it, and maybe...
So we could bring this up again at our next meeting?
Yep.
Does that seem...
I would appreciate tabling it and, and, you know...
Okay, so I make a motion to table Dan's resignation.
I'll second.
All in favor? The motion is carried.
And I mean, I'll just respect me, Gary, but I wanna give you, I wanna give him an opportunity to...
I think at this time I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
Um, can I bring one other thing under other business? Or, or... I've noticed in other communities that, you know, the extra things like Dan wanted to introduce something are not done in, um... Sorry, in, in public participation. There's actually an agenda item for the board members to actually give updates and, and can... I mean, can we just adjust the agenda to, to show that? 'Cause when we do wanna add something, we're never quite sure when we should put it in. I mean, I, I don't know if that's appropriate, but an agenda item that follows us every week for board updates or, um, you know, just to kind of...
Well, certainly it, it, it would keep all of the, um, the current issues in, in the forefront. No?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, that's good.
That's good, really. Again, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Motion is adjourned.